Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Bunton?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Fournier?
Here.
Menter?
Here.
I need a motion to excuse Commissioner Crapp.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Crapp.
Support.
Roll call please. Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Menter?
Yes.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, and communication reports, including our quarterly department head reports, are we doing those before the presentation? Oh, we're gonna do the presentation first? Okay, we do have a presentation this evening from our beautification committee on the Snowflake Awards, so please come forward.
Hello, my name is Kathy Rollerson and I'm with the Mount Clemens Beautification Committee, and along with Louise Lambert, Junie Cuero, Nancy Donavie, Sherry Gabby, Debbie Baird, and Al Shambly, who's not here. We'd like to thank the mayor and the city commissioners for giving us the opportunity to publicly acknowledge seven of our city residents for their truly delightful Christmas decorations. You know, it's not necessarily the amount of lights or the size of the display that makes the difference, it's the fact that they want to joyously give out with the Christmas season, and that's what makes all the difference. And so, we're here to, just to acknowledge the fact that they gave of themselves and they wanted to make the season festive for themselves and for their neighborhoods. And so, we just want to give a small acknowledgement of our appreciation for what they've done for the neighborhood and the city. So, we truly appreciate that, and we appreciate everyone who's participated in it. So, what we're going to do is Lisa's going to read off the names and the addresses, and then if anyone is available, if they're here, they would come up, and we'd like to give you the awards and the ornament that we normally give out.
Very good.
First off, we have Valerie Stevens, 93 Jones Street. Next up is James and Thelma Brown, 45 Michigan Avenue.
Um, can I suggest that maybe she shows us the award?
Oh, yes, that's right.
Because I don't think any of the commissioners have seen them either.
First time this year, we've also made that campus print of the house, the award-winning house.
Oh, nice. Awesome.
That's really nice.
And there's a gift certificate also. So, there's a gift certificate that gets in there also, so don't be sick. From local Mount Clemens restaurants.
Of course. John Ballard, 475 North Estillant.
Yeah, that one was awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Manuel Ramirez and Timothy Nichols, 59 Maross. Next up, Dale Ingle, 8 Roseview. Then next up, we have Tom and Ann Peters, 236 Jones.
They were not able to be here.
That's funny.
Nonetheless, they were not able to be here either.
Were you just giving me anything?
Yeah, she is.
Isadora Irons, 16 Babbord Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody's interested, those pictures were, they were put on canvas by, printed by Johnsons, so if anybody wants more information, they do a great job, so. Thank you so much for all of you, all the winners, congratulations. And now you want to start with the department head reports.
We can start with Captain Hoppy from the fire department.
Well, good evening. Let me start by, it was very nice, as we drive through town in the middle of the night, it's nice to see all the Christmas lights up, the melodies out moving around, it's very nice that you guys did that. So, for the fourth quarter, these are our stats. We had 797 runs total, and let's see here, we had 13 fires, we had one incident that we luckily got a handle on very quickly over at the plant, paint plant. We had 508 rescue calls, 31 hazardous conditions which ranged from power lines to gas leaks. Seems like we had a few fuel spills, cold weather kinda, kinda brings things on. 149 good intent calls, we did have some false alarms, 51 false alarms in the last quarter, which is a pretty good number. And that's about it, our year-end totals. Now, this year, because we switched over to the new dispatch system, the interns duty manager came over the other day, so in our red book, we have one number, and for this year, it's different, the total number than what we actually finished with, the numbers that you got. Now, next year, our numbers will be right on with the new dispatch system being in place for the full year, numbers are gonna be substantially higher. And as you have the numbers in front of you, we had, now this is the other number, seems like it was 3,000.
3,095.
What, what do you have?
3,095.
3,095. We were working on this right up till this afternoon to make sure that you had the actual number. And that's about it. Now, we were very busy also with doing community events, we've been working with Mr. Murray with Victory Inn, and on some other legal issues. We had, we were, in December, we get invited to a lot of places, a lot of community events, we try to make as many as we can, if we do inspections, the runs, as you see, it's hard to hit everything. Did a lot of training, our training really, really kicks into high gear in the fall. We, we also did a bunch of hydro and flow tests for new businesses, there's a ton of new business coming into town. It's nice every time I come here, and I can say that to you, there's a lot of people coming into town, and I hope you're not getting complaints, because we do what we can to try to keep up. There's a lot of plans being submitted, as you go around town, there's a lot of new construction, and we're very lucky, we work hand-to-hand with community development, and that's working well, and we've been very fortunate to get everything done. Does anybody have any questions of being? Yes, sir.
I wanna hear about the paint plant.
You wanna hear about the paint plant?
Yeah.
It was, middle of the night, and one of the security personnel happened to come upon a fire burning that they knew nothing about, just, we got very lucky, they caught it middle of the night, middle of the night at the plant, they kinda run skeleton crew a little bit, so they were very fortunate, security got there right away, they got a handle on it, because the way it came in, we thought, oh boy, this is, we're gonna be here for a while, maybe a couple days.
Where was the fire at?
It was out in the back of, are you familiar with the plant, the way it is now?
Worked there for 20 years.
So, in the, in the back, back where the tank farms are?
Yeah.
They built a state-of-the-art filming center for the semis, and it was in, it was in some wiring on where the eye wash baths, they had electrical wiring to keep it from freezing, the wiring arced out. And they're so proactive there, that they immediately went through every eye wash station out there, and they tore quite a bit of stuff up to make sure that this was not going to be a reoccurring problem. Safety is number one, if you work there, you know. Safety is number one out there, they're very safety-conscious, and we're very fortunate that they do the job they do.
Captain Hoppy, just to clarify, so that everybody doesn't think that the city had 13 fires within the city, you have mutual aid that you help.
That's correct.
So, I just wanna make sure people don't think that we had 13 fires all around the city.
No, as far as mutual aid calls, we went on 32 automatic aid calls in the last quarter, and we received automatic aid 154 times. It was pretty busy for a quarter, unfortunately. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, and happy new year to everybody.
Yep, you too.
Linda Coon from the finance department.
Hi. The city's 2017 fiscal year-end audit was completed and presented by city commission, presented to city commission by Prime Marie and the auditors. All applicable state-required reports and the citizen guide posting was completed, and the audit report, the city financial information is available for viewing at city hall as well as on the city's website. The assessing staff is in the process of establishing 2018 land values for residential and commercial properties and industrial properties. An assessment notices will be mailed on March 1st. There were 6,373 winter 2017 property tax bills mailed, using an updated bill format. All the information is available on the backside of the bill as to how to make payment. City tax bills are due by February 28th to city, to the city, city hall treasurer's office, the mailbox, and starting on March 1st, all payments need to be made to the county treasurer's office. The city had an average of 2,400 utility bills mailed per month. 89 properties had delinquent water payments, or broken arrangements, and were shut off, and generated over 2,700 in fees to have it reestablished service. There were 386 parking stickers sold, totaled over $27,000. The city replaced 11 computers and two servers, and a big project that's now underway, the new phone system and data connection upgrade for all city buildings was approved. It's estimated to save about $34,000 a year once it's been implemented. The new data drops have been installed at all the buildings, and AT&amp;T estimates about three months to complete the project, we're hoping it'll be sooner. And then lastly, purchasing was very busy, they wrote 12 bids that were posted on Mitten Cable, the city's website, processed, and some, three insurance claims, 200 purchase orders, 32 agenda items, 26 service orders for building repairs and maintenance. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Sarah Price from human resources.
Right, the city ended the fourth quarter with 71 total employees, 63 of those are full-time and eight are part-time. In October, we successfully conducted our first benefits fair, where we invited representatives from our insurance carriers, as well as representatives from our retirement group, voluntary benefits, and college savings plan, and we also had an onsite flu clinic for our employees. It was very well-received by our staff members, so we will be doing that again. After the open enrollment, everyone who had made changes or made elections, all of those changes were implemented for the January 1st payroll. We successfully onboarded two new employees, wastewater operator and a dial ride driver. We worked to prepare the payroll data for year-end, the W-2 and 1099 processing, which is currently going on right now. We've completed the self-audit for our workers' compensation, we assisted the finance department with the preparation of an RFP for our assessor position, and we are still accepting applications for a part-time dial-ride bus driver position. If you are interested in this position, or any ones that the city may have available, our website is www.cityofmountclemens.com, there's a link for job opportunities, and our employment application is available on our HR page. We processed seven bi-weekly payrolls, three retiree payrolls, and three miscellaneous payrolls. We offered all of our staff training with workplace harassment, and we've offered all of our supervisors additional sexual harassment training. We responded to a variety of employment verification surveys and insurance questions, as well as general HR information, and then lastly, the Clementine newsletter was distributed to all Mount Clemens residents. This year, now with the bicentennial, the newsletters will have a historic element to them, so just look for some cool pictures that will be included, and that newsletter is available here at city hall, additional copies are also available at the treasurer's office and community development, and they can be accessed electronically through our website. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Oh, but you've added some really great things for the employees, and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Jeanette Best from utilities department.
I summarized our, they always giggle at my fact that I'm short. I summarized some statistics for you, and what I did is actually added up the three months, so you don't have to do it yourself. We produced 183 million gallons of exceptional quality drinking water, and that brings our total annual production to 770 million gallons this year. It's a lot of water. We treated 372 million gallons of wastewater in the last three months, and that brings our total annual treatment up to 1.67 billion gallons this year. And the reason there's such a big difference is that we take in, some of our sewers are combined sewers, so we're taking in some stormwater too. We responded to 247 customer service requests in this last quarter, and that brings our total annual responses up to 1,090. The guys are out there responding to customers whenever we get a call. At the wastewater treatment plant, we completed the evaluation of our local limits for industrial discharges, those required by the DEQ, and we submitted that on time. We submitted the annual biosolids report to the DEQ in October. Our second biosolids dewatering centrifuge is currently being dismantled and ready to be shipped off to be totally rebuilt, to bring both of our centrifuges back to pristine operational status. We installed new UV lights for our disinfectioning for water at the wastewater plant, and the new operator that we hired, he had a Class D certification when we hired him in, which is the lowest level of certification. Well, he took his test for his Class C, and he passed that in November, so we've got another certified operator. At the water treatment plant, they're rebuilding all the filter control stations, and they're about halfway finished. We're doing that in-house, and it's our staff doing it, so they're doing a really good job. They completed and submitted to the MDEQ the required quarterly testing, and they cleaned and inspected the 1929 phloculation basin. Water and sewer crew repaired 11 water main breaks, seven of them just in December. The fire hydrant painting project has completed 250 hydrants, you probably saw that before the weather got cold, we've got about 750 to do, so it's a big project, but we only worked on it for a couple of months, because it took a while to get us started. The cleaning and televising of all the city's sanitary and combined sewers is continuing, and right now, we're about 75% complete. Does anybody have any questions?
The new meters you put in for the residential homes?
Mm-hmm.
How's that meter working out?
You mean the automatically read ones?
The ones you put on the water meters, that usually go in the homes.
Mm-hmm, they're working well, the new ones are, yes.
Okay.
So, we're not having any problems with them.
I asked because you came to my house and changed one. You said it didn't work for a long time, because you give me a long bill.
And that's something we're working with the finance department to try to identify meters that are not working properly, and we haven't been getting, you know, appropriate reads, so we're going out and trying to catch up with those and replace those meters as we go along.
Well, I'm glad to see that you're also making sure that the city commissioners' meters are working properly.
Brian Tingley from community development.
Okay, in the fourth quarter of 2017, there were 340 building and other trade permits issued, 371 new code enforcement cases were opened, there were 244 rental inspections conducted, 137 rental units received their certificate of compliance, 15 new certificates of occupancy were issued, and the city's contractor performed 38 grass and wheat cuttings. Also this quarter, department staff attended meetings of the DDA Historical Commission and Harbor Commission, we attended several meetings with advancing McCombe related to future investment in the city, including their annual breakfast in November, where the city's kayak launch project was highlighted, and a pre-construction meeting for that project was held this past October. We participated in a meeting with McCombe County and other local governments on a model and industrial zoning ordinance, we attended the 2018 CDVG application workshop, and oversaw the demolition of the utility building at Shady Side Park. We attended a pre-construction meeting for the Meadows Assistilating Facility at 71 North Avenue, and a ribbon cutting ceremony for RV construction at 249 Cass Avenue. Planning commission met one time in the fourth quarter, they reviewed the conditional rezoning request for 205 Washington, which the city commission ultimately approved, and they also approved a new site plan for a new 44,000 square foot, six-story northwest addition at McClaren-McCombe Hospital. Construction on that project should take place in 2018. And then lastly, we worked with Jeff at DPS and the Michigan Transit Museum, and the city was awarded a grant for the replacement of the, an upgrade of the railroad track crossing at North Avenue, so that should also be occurring in 2018. And that's everything.
How often do you do a rental inspection?
There is no set frequency in the rental ordinance, but we do try to do it every 18 months to two years.
And on request or complaint?
Right, correct, if we do receive a complaint that we feel is a valid complaint, then we will also request an inspection if that timeframe is not up yet.
Thank you.
During the last quarter, some of the tasks the public service department has accomplished, our meeting with MDOT regarding a future combined sewer separation project along north and southbound Grashit. We've completed the MDOT quarterly reimbursement and employee benefit rate reports, begun the design of the asphalt mill and cap project of Harrington Street, in which construction is expected to begin in late summer of 2018.
Late summer.
Assisted the utilities department in the repair of water main breaks, we flooded the skating ponds at Dorthia, Leonor, Wilson, and Lawndale Parks, we've begun planning and working on the 2018-19 budget, met with the MDEQ regarding the future work required to maintain compliance at the former Mount Clemens landfill, performed the monthly methane monitoring and a DEQ mandated dewatering event of the methane ventilation system, completed the 2017 concrete and asphalt patching program on city streets, planted 27 trees within the right-of-way at residential properties throughout the city in conjunction with a MDNR grant. All DPS staff had completed the annual training requirements for workplace harassment, we issued over 1,300 parking citations, generating approximately $112,000 in parking meter revenue, responded to 57 animal control complaints, and transported over 13,000 passengers utilizing the senior shopper and dial-ride services.
Any questions?
Take a breath. Take a breath, you're busy.
Thank you.
In the last quarter, the city clerk's office has administered the November 7, 2017 city general election. The election went smoothly, and we were very pleased with the new voting equipment. Hopefully, most of you had a chance to see it or use it. We were especially impressed with the ease of operation of the equipment, and for both the voters and the election workers, it was very easy to send the results, this new equipment, you can send the election results from that precinct directly to the county before they even closed the precinct, so it's nice that everything worked out very smoothly and quickly for that. I do wanna thank all of the dedicated election workers that we have for providing courteous and efficient service to all of our voters, as they always do. Upcoming elections in 2018 include the state primary election scheduled for Tuesday, August 7th, and the state general election scheduled for Tuesday, November 6th. There is a possibility that a special election will be called on Tuesday, May 8th, and we'll find that out this week. The city's, the clerk's office will be attending election training mandated by the state Bureau of Elections in preparation for the 2018 state elections in the next few months. The clerk's office has promptly processed numerous Freedom of Information Act requests, as well as voter registrations, business registrations, and vending machine permits. The clerk's office and the city manager's office have been working very diligently with the bicentennial committee on events such as the Hall of History, which you can see some displayed items out here this evening, the city ceremony, and various events that will take place throughout the year in celebration of our bicentennial.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That's it.
That's it? All right. Thank you, everybody. Okay, adoption of the agenda.
Move the adopting agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Menter?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, public participation, this is the time you may come to the mic. All we ask is you give us your name, residential address, and you adhere to our three-minute rule.
Hello, my name is Lisa Taylor, I live at 225 Northbound Grashit, I also own a business at 61 McCombe Place for the past two weeks. I've been, we've been fixing up our shop, we own paperback writer books, my husband and I, and we're fill records, we've been repainting, moving bookcases, moving record cases, come on down, take a look, we've got some new exciting products in, love to see you there.
Tell them when you're gonna be open.
Hopefully, this Friday. And I don't, I'm going back to the store.
Okay, you have to go back to work, okay, Lisa.
Hi, my name is Holly Lewis, I'm at 50 Church Street Apartment 707, I'm not really sure if I'm in the right meeting, but I was here for the housing meeting.
Oh, that's upstairs.
Is it upstairs? I'm sorry.
That's all right.
My name is Junie Aquario, I live at 39 Lincoln, and I want to commend the street department for clearing the streets, and I know some of our neighborhoods still aren't done, but when we had that horrendous storm a while back, we were in St. Clair's shores, it was horrible coming, but as soon as we hit Mount Clemens, all of the main streets were cleared and it was safe, and I just appreciate all they're doing, because it's been a horrible, horrible winter so far, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Hi, good afternoon or evening. Bill Eckert on 224 Comet. I just wanted to add some input about the garbage cans. I think that is going to be discussed. I'm not, I'm in favor of being able to have a can as an option. It doesn't really need to be a rolly cart or anything like that, but a can would be nice. There are some small animals in my street that like to eat the garbage. And even if you put it on in the morning, they usually get it before the garbage men get there. And then you got a mess to clean up when you get home from work, and that's never fun. But yeah, garbage can would be a nice option. I like the recycle bin that we have now, that works really well for me. It's been working well. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We had no administrative responses. Need a motion to approve the minutes of previous meetings?
Motion to approve the minutes of January 2, 2018.
Support.
Rokal?
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier? Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, general business. J's 9A approve purchases and payment of invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, Rokal, please.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Rokal?
Fournier?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
City Managers Report?
As part of the city's bicentennial celebration, this month's Hall of History display at City Hall features the city of Mount Clemens. The month of February will feature Mount Clemens Community Schools and St. Mary's School. As you enter City Hall, you may notice the new TV monitor in the hallway. This will be used to offer up-to-date information to residents while visiting City Hall and will also serve as a directional display. Information such as meeting notices, a minute of your time video, and city events will be shown. Christmas trees will be collected by the city's refuse contractor on your regular scheduled refuse pickup day through January 26, 2018. Please make sure the tree is bare and not in a plastic bag when placed at the curb for pickup. The 13th Annual Fire and Ice Chili Cook-Off Fundraiser will take place Thursday, February 1, 2018, from 6:00 PM until 9:00 PM at various downtown bars and restaurants. All proceeds benefit the Anton Art Center and the Mount Clemens Goodfellows. In conjunction with the annual Fire and Ice Chili Cook-Off is the 13th Annual Mount Clemens Ice Carving Show, which will take place downtown on Friday, February 2 through Sunday, February 4. This year's show will commemorate the city's history in celebration of its bicentennial. For more information on either event, please contact the Downtown Development Authority at (586) 469-4168.
Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Campbell?
I would like to thank the Mount Clemens Beautification Committee and the residents who worked very hard in making our city beautiful at the holiday season. And I also would like to thank the residents who have volunteered for our other boards, committees, and commissions. I mean, that takes a lot of time and we need to be very thankful for their opportunity, for their volunteering. Also, the resident that talked about the garbage cans, I agree, I also had animals that got in mine, so when I put my bag out, I spray it with ammonia and they never bothered it anymore. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for those tips. Campbell's tips? Commissioner Bunton?
First of all, I'd like to also thank our Streets Department for snow removal. Excellent, they got on the job right away and kept it clean. I appreciate that, and all my neighbors did too. Beautification Committee, awesome job, and it's good to recognize those people who put a little time in and do the things that make our community look so nice, so we do appreciate everything you've done. I just want to let the seniors out there know that senior citizens and income eligible citizens for minor home repairs and chores, if you have a need for that, if you're 60 years old, if you're severely disabled, or a homeowner or occupant of a mobile home, you may be eligible to get minor home repairs and even have your snow shoveled for little or no cost at all. If you contact the McComb County Community Service Agency at a number (586) 469-5228 for further information and application process. If we don't use this, it'll be taken away from us and it would no longer be available. So 60 years of old, 60 years of age or older, severely disabled, or mobile homeowner or occupant, this is available to you. I did attend the Martin Luther King's Breakfast held by the McComb County Ministerial Alliance, and it was a great event. The speaker was Robert Young. He's a Michigan Supreme Court retiree, Michigan Supreme Court Justice. And he did a walk through our history of being racially prejudiced and the limitations that were put on people as they traveled, which is something that young people can't even relate to, but if you lived through it, you might... The fact that if you pulled up to a gas station and you wanted to get gas, they could refuse you the gas. They just would not pump the gas for you. Or if you wanted to use the restroom, they would tell you, "No, you're not allowed to." These are kinds of things that our people, our young people today can't imagine, can't fathom, but there were things that were real. If you were traveling and you wanted to go to a hotel motel, you would be immediately refused. They would tell you, "Oh, there might be one 20 miles down that road or over here that way," but generally, your presence was refused. And that's why a lot of traveling in those days, you would go to a relative or a friend's house because the availability of a hotel or motel was not available to you. And I guess after walking through that, revisiting the past that even I have experienced, it was encouraging to let young people know just how things were and that we have come a long way, but we still have a long ways to go. So I thought that was very, very interesting, and I think he did an awesome job with that. And I thank the Ministerial Alliance for bringing him in and for having such a program. With that said, Commissioner comments also include dates that you might want to celebrate. A.A. Milne's birthday was on January 18, or is, is coming January 18, and that's Winnie De Pooh Day. And I guess he's the guy that wrote the book of Winnie De Pooh, so something you might want to consider celebrating. If you run across things that you, you know, need to celebrate, how about on January 21st, that's National Hugging Day? So if you've got somebody you want to hug, there's a good excuse right there. On January 26th, it's Spouses Day. I would leave that one alone. And January 31st is Backwards Day. So if you want to do things backwards on that day, I think it's perfectly acceptable. You know, I throw these out there because, you know, sometimes it's interesting to see some of the days that are in your calendar that might be worthy of being celebrated. Commissioner wisdom for tonight. None of us is as smart as all of us. Also, from Martin Luther King, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands in times of challenge and controversy." That's a good thought, and with that, we'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Can we add January 19th to your list as Commissioner Bunton's birthday?
Thank you.
Commissioner Fournier?
Thank you. I also want to thank the Beautification Committee and congratulations to all the recipients of the Snowflake Awards, one of which is my neighbor, so I was very glad to see them get that. They work very, very hard on their display, and now in this very, very cold weather, they have to take it all down, which is also a big job. So thank you for recognizing them, and I hope everyone has a good evening and a good month. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford?
I too would like to thank the beautification people for a fine job and the snowflake people. But I would also like to thank Roger Bunton for taking me to that lecture yesterday. If you're under 50 years old, you don't know what it was like back in the 50s and the 60s. Traveling was impossible. It was, the lecture was really nice. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah?
So January 30, 1929, Chief Edward Switzke of the Mount Clemens Fire Department passed away. On Saturday, January 26, 1929, the chief led his men into a fire at Sam Klein's boarding house at 54 East Broadway in Mount Clemens. He was overcome by gas fumes and then, you know, passed away four days later at St. Joseph's Hospital. He was 51 years old, and as they say, "Rest easy, chief, the men of the MCFD are still holding the line for you." Ken Kish wrote an absolutely wonderful editorial the other day in the McComb Daily, and he talked about taking his wife down to the Dirty Dog Jazz Cafe in Gross Point. That is a marvelous place, and it is my contention that that is exactly what we need in Mount Clemens. So Ken, now that you have contacts down there, please invite them to come down and see our city, and we'll be happy, I'm sure Brian Tingley will be happy to set up some, you know, buildings for you to look at. The Dirty Dog Jazz Cafe is a wonderful venue. I'm glad that you got to celebrate with Diane, but come on, use your contacts, bring them down. It could be the Dirty Dog too, or we'll name it the, you know, the Fussy Kitty, or it doesn't matter, just bring them on down. The Snowflake Awards, you know, when you're coming home at night and it's dark and it's cold, and you pull into your subdivision or pull onto your street and you see these houses lit up, it is so cheerful and it is so very nice. But I'm going to throw a challenge out to the Beautification Committee, and I'm going to say Halloween decorations, because there are people in the city that just do it up for Halloween too, and it would be really nice to get, to have some kind of an award for that also. So there's your, there's your challenge. And I would like to say happy birthday to Commissioner Bunton. I'm not going to say aloud how old you are, but happy birthday, I hope you have many more, and with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Kudos, Beautification Commission, did a great job as always. Appreciate the time and effort you took to do this, and the city's better for it. City's better for having you on the commission, so thank you very much. Commissioner Bunton, happy birthday.
Thank you.
I hope you have a great celebration.
We'll stay sober.
That's good, or at least use Uber, you know, if you decide not to. The Hall of History, please, tell people to come and take a look. Fantastic things going on out there, and we're going to have new things every month. And I think it just speaks volumes of this city. And it's a great city. It's 200 years old, I mean, 1818 to 2018. What a great city, and it's getting better, and so encourage people to come. And if you have anything that you'd like to display during the various months, we are, it's on our website. So if you're associated with any of those, whether it's schools, whether it's hospitals, whether it's businesses, whatever, and you'd like to add to the display, we can lock your display up so it's safe, please share with the rest of us. We'd love to see your stuff. So pass that on, and out there in TV land also, and appreciate everything that the Bicentennial Committee is doing. They're working very hard, got some great things coming up this year, so stay tuned. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn and go into exec session.
Motion to enter into executive session.
Support.
Rokal?
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Support, support, support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Shut up.
Meeting adjourned.